Okay, I'll go ahead and call this council study session to order. We have two items on our agenda this evening. Presentation and discussion on update related to the community preservation ordinance. We will start with that. I think I see Kyle putting his jacket on, so he must be up first.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're before you to talk about the community preservation ordinance update. I've got Lori DeOrio with us, who is in charge of code enforcement or code compliance team. So she can answer the hard questions. I've only got about nine slides, and we'll just kind of walk you through what we've seen, what we've seen kind of trending in the last six months.
And remind me, this is the update that we requested when we put this in place?
Correct, it is, yes. So some background, the community preservation ordinance was approved on June 18th, 2024. It went into effect on July 18th of 2024. And you can see here on this slide that the council did request three-month updates. We will continue to do that as we work through this ordinance. One thing that's important to know is Lori and our legal department put together a very good training session for all the code compliance officers, so that everybody was on the same page and really had a good understanding of the ordinance as it went into effect and we walked into it. Again, this is an update only, there is no ask of you tonight. We just wanted to provide the information. One thing that was discussed several times, and you'll hear me use the words a little differently tonight, was the actual process of code enforcement. Typically, what occurs is there is a phone call or a 3-1-1, but it's a complaint from a citizen, or it's a proactive notice by one of our folks. When that happens, a complaint is processed in our system and a case is created. So you'll see the difference between a case and a violation as I move forward. So a case is created, it's assigned to an inspector, and within 24 hours, they go out and look at the site and determine if there's any violations or not. There can be multiple violations with one case, and you'll see that in some of the data here in just a second. One thing that we stressed when we brought this in front of you in July is we are more educational in nature, and we want to work with people through the ordinance. So you can see five, six, and seven are all first notice of violation, second notice of violation, third notice of violation. Again, the intent is education and working through people or with people in order to get compliance. And then finally, if we just can't get to that point at the end of the day, then there is a violation that's created and it does go through our court system. If I miss anything, please stop me.
It's a last resort.
Yes, it is a last resort, for sure. So here's some of the data that we wanted to go through. You can see on the bottom right-left, I'm sorry, bottom-left slide, there have been 706 cases that have been opened since July of 2024. There have been 895 violations that occurred from those 706 cases that were created. If you just look at the community preservation ordinance information and the things that changed through that ordinance, there were 57 cases that were opened and 67 violations that were noted. And if you remember right, too, we had the long discussion about backyards and what was going to occur. We've had nine cases and violations that have... Nine violations and cases in backyards. So when you look at the proportion of the cases, really, it's 1 in 12 so far that we've seen that are related to the new community preservation ordinance. And if you look at the backyard issue, approximately 1% of the cases have been located in backyards. Now, and Lori can expand on this, but there are a lot of different types of violations in this. We're seeing a lot of inoperable vehicles, we're seeing a lot of landscaping, we're seeing dead trees, we've seen a lot of litter. So there's several different things that go into the cases in the community preservation ordinance. Do you want to add to that, or are we good?
No, we're good unless anyone has questions.
Okay. So one of the things that we found in the last six months is the number of cases and violations have increased, not a great deal, but they have increased due to our new community preservation ordinance. There were folks that were actually waiting for the ordinance to become effective so that they could call in different complaints. I mentioned that we did a lot of training and really had our code compliance officers take a look at this ordinance as they were out in the field and trying to interpret it. And we've noticed that there are things that we still have missed. There are some definitions that are not clear, there are some things with mailings that didn't really make a lot of sense. So we're currently going back through the ordinance and identifying those things that they actually identified for us. And we'll make changes to the ordinance and bring them back forward. Again, I think that was very smart of the council to say, hey, come back every six months, three months, so that we can take a look at this and see where we may be off.
And I appreciate you working out the bugs, right? There's always kinks when you do things, and it's like my greatest fear when we pass propositions, because you can't change them. When it's at the local level and we have ordinances, we can fix something that's not working right. Thank you.
Right, yes. Well, and this was a brand-new ordinance, we'd never really had anything in place like this, so it makes a lot of sense that we find some challenges. Again, you saw the process slide where we go through three different types of notice of violations. Again, it's about education, it's about working with people. I put the slides back in from July that showed the emergency and minor home repair program, the things that that's available to help with, and then also some of the other programs that we mentioned in July that folks can get ahold of and that we can connect, you know, connect folks that are having some challenges with in order to get to compliance and make sure we're moving forward. Next steps, I mentioned we're going to amend the ordinance, so we'll be bringing that in front of you for those changes in the not-too-distant future. And then again, we'll continue to update council every three months to make sure this is going in the direction that we want and see if there's any type of community outreach or any type of trends that we see again. And that is my nine slides. We are happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kyle and Lori? Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Kyle and Lori.
Thank you very much for the report. I'm just curious on backyard items. Was there any type of theme that was, you know, for the nine cases, or was it just individual? Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The trend usually that we're seeing right now is an accumulation of multiple items. So they are not a one-off situation, you're going to see large piles and situations. But, you know, nine cases out of the total 800 cases, very good statistic. So, and the inspectors are very good about working with the individuals, because in a lot of instances, they're not aware that now this potentially is an issue for them, and they've had years of accumulation. So the inspectors are very good about working with them to educate them and then find out what items they ultimately love most and want to keep, and then the other items that they can find new homes for.
Thank you. It appears that it was something more major than what some of the residents had concerns, and I don't blame them, that it was going to be something kind of minor. I don't like my neighbor, so now I'm going to do that, you know, report you. So I know that we've had some issues, which I think probably generated the interest in this ordinance to begin with. So I appreciate that when inspectors are going out, that they're educated about what programs are out there to help them, because sometimes it's not always just the convenient way of storing things, and perhaps there's other reasons, and they need some help. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Bon Jivani?
Thank you, Mayor. So follow-up to Councilmember Tilke's question. In general, was the property owners positive, neutral, get out of my yard, in general?
I don't know the specifics as far as all nine cases, but usually, if there's an issue, the inspector will ultimately bring me into an issue. And in all of these nine cases, there has been a, what I would call a positive outcome, because I haven't been involved to mediate an issue or to sit with the resident to explain further why we need to do this.
Councilmember Torguson?
I'm just curious as to those nine backyard violations. The, actually, I have two questions, but that one, were the houses next to them or behind them two-story, is that how it was generated, from two stories, or is it just generated because they knew?
Per the policy and the directive that legal has provided for us, when it comes down to viewing the backyard issue, a potential backyard issue, those properties have to be adjacent to a second-story home or something, a home with an elevated viewing deck, something that's intentional for someone to be able to view. Many homes have the back patios that have like a spiral staircase, and then you have a viewing deck. Those two are the only options that are available for inspectors to view backyard issues.
That, and I'm curious, as we saw it go up, because neighbors now turning on neighbors, do you feel that's going to slow down, or we can continue pitting our neighbors against each other?
I don't see an uptick in the situation, nine cases out of the 800.
In overall, with the overall, not just those nine?
I haven't seen an increase in adversarial conversations, so... Slight increase, yes, because of the preservation ordinance, but not in a negativity towards the preservation ordinance.
And I think Lori, I think you or Kyle said that the, there were people waiting for the preservation ordinance to go into effect because of situations that they had surrounding them, and so that might have been the initial uptick, too, I'm thinking?
Yes, I think there were several individuals that were waiting for us to be able to address. They were egregious situations.
I know we've been talking about a couple or a few of them for quite some time, and so that was another reason that this was discussed and put into place, was because of those situations, and to help the folks out that are having those issues, too, right? Whether they're the neighbors or the people in the homes themselves, so. Any other questions or comments? I actually thought that it was a smaller increase than I thought it was going to be, and really encouraged by the only nine backyard that you've put through so far. I think that I expected more, for, you know, for different reasons, for people maybe going after neighbors or so on and so forth, and kind of the mentality that we're living in right now, if you will. Yeah, so that's great, thank you. Thanks, you guys, thanks for being here, thanks for bringing this forward again and staying on the updates, too. Thanks, Lori, nice to see you. Item two on our agenda this evening is presentation and discussion on municipal code amendments related to Section 54-1, obstruction to public property, and Section 46-43, prohibited activities. Oh, we have a group. Hi, Dawn, turn your mic on, Dawn, please.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this study session tonight is to present the council with some proposed updates to the code related to our remadas and our bus stops within the town. Through some recent experiences with our parks and with our remadas and with our bus stops, we realized that there were some areas of the code that needed to be updated to provide our teams with added guidance, to ensure that these facilities are being used in the manner most aligned with their intended use and purpose. For each of these updates, our team will be talking about our current practices, the updates we're proposing, and what those updates will mean for our residents and our teams as they are working through these issues. And first up will be Lane, who will talk about our remadas, followed by Chief Engstead, who will talk about our bus stops.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to present this information to you today. As Dawn said, I'm going to start off, my name is Lane Graham, and I have the honor of overseeing our park ranger program. So I've been nominated, I guess, to go over this proposed code amendment. So the Parks and Recreation Department is proposing the amendment to Chapter 46, Article 2, Section 46-43. The language added will require a reservation permit when using a remada or picnic area for more than three hours. I'm going to go over a little bit of our current practice to give an understanding of where we're going and what this impact will be. So currently, our remadas and covered pavilions are first come, first served without a reservation. Reservations are allowed in all community or district parks. We don't allow day-of reservations for a couple of different reasons. One, if you have somebody, you know, let's say I set up my family and we're having a picnic, and somebody walks up and they say, boop, I have a reservation now, you have to leave. So we don't allow those day-of reservations for that, and also, our front office takes a lot of time and consideration of what the activity is that they're doing in the remada, to make sure that we don't need additional documentation or certificates of insurance for bounce houses or other things like that. The park rangers that I oversee currently enforce all the reservations, and we added a QR code sign to all of the reservable spaces, so that if you walk up to a remada, you can scan the QR code and find the park that you're at, and find if there is a current reservation in that remada. And then if there isn't, then obviously you can use it and set up your picnic or party, whatever you're looking to do. So that's a little bit about our current practice. The proposed language would be unauthorized use of town-owned improvements. No person shall damage or wastefully or improperly use any town-owned improvements in a town park or recreation facility, including occupying a remada or picnic area for more than three hours per day unless authorized by a reservation permit in accordance with Section 46-42. I think it's important to note that we did a lot of research in looking at surrounding cities and other municipalities that have this language, and currently, several have different languages within theirs, but we chose to kind of mimic Tempe's, which they have four hours for their reservation requirement, and looking to reduce that, we found three hours to be appropriate for our remadas and what we are looking to accomplish with this. So some of the anticipated impacts, the first is we want to encourage advanced reservations, especially for that extended use. If you're looking to have a guarantee of the space, I think a reservation should be required. And so we're still using a first-come, first-served basis with those remadas and allowing anyone to come up and use them. We're just trying to encourage more reservations in advance and reduce conflicts and issues that may come by people fighting over remadas or walking up and trying to use them without the reservation, and increasing the drop-in availability and usage of those remadas. I look at this as, kind of mentioned, a family walking up, wanting to use that remada, and another group is already utilizing the remada, and they've been kind of monopolizing it for several hours, and a family just kind of waiting to have their picnic or birthday party in that remada. So really, this increases by kind of trying to get a group to move on after three hours, this increases the availability and usage for the general public to be able to walk up and use that remada as well. In addition, it's maximizing the opportunities for public use. I will give you the example of our tennis courts currently, I think that gives me a little bit of perspective, I won't say pickleball, tennis courts, we'll say. So if you're using a tennis court without a reservation and there's no one waiting, you're allowed to use it for an extended period of time. But if there is someone waiting, we have a rule that you have one hour to use that tennis court before you need to move on and allow the next person. You can get back in line, of course, but it's a rule that we've put in place, and we're looking to kind of institute that same kind of move-on, so that someone else has the opportunity within our remadas. So this language added to our code allows for maximum opportunities of public use. And then again, I've mentioned reducing potential conflicts. The more reservations that we have, the reduced opportunity for people to fight over that space. Currently, the park rangers spend a lot of time when someone's utilizing the remada and someone does have a reservation, but the group that's in it does not, they tend to have a lot of conflicts in a group not wanting to move on and not wanting to leave. So some of this language encourages more reservations and also helps us reduce some of those potential conflicts. And again, it's a public park, and we want them to be available, so adding this language is more about really encouraging more public use, and not because we don't want them to use it, but because we want more people to be able to have the opportunity to use them. All right, any questions for me about remadas before I pass on to Chief?
Councilmember Bon Jivani?
Thank you, Mayor. So do you envision nine o'clock in the morning, there's someone in a remada without reservations, do you envision the park ranger approaching them and telling them, hey, you've got three hours, to kind of cushion it in case you have to kick them out later?
Right, I think, again, there's going to be some learning curves, so I think we'll add to our QR code signage or communication about our remada rules, and adding the three-hour maximum in there, without a reservation, that is. And yes, if someone's using the remada and we see that there are other people that want to use it, we may at that point have the park rangers say, you know, you have a three-hour maximum. This is an area where I think we're going to learn a lot, like, it's same as the tennis courts, park rangers are not in every park to mitigate what's going on. So it does take a little bit of the community to say, I've been waiting for this remada for three and a half hours, and I would like for the park ranger to come and help me, you know, to be able to use it. So I think we're going to rely on the community, but also try and communicate the three-hour maximum ahead of time, so that we don't have to go and approach, we don't want to discourage you, so obviously, we don't want to go up as soon as you walk into the remada and say, hey, you have a time limit. So we want to make it more comfortable and make sure they know that before they go into the remada.
Any guess, currently, how many percentage-wise of people that have reservations versus those who don't?
It depends on the park. I would say at Gilbert Regional Park, you have about 97% of reservations, because everyone kind of knows that that is the only way to guarantee the use of a remada there. But at a park like Freestone, there's not probably as high of a percentage of reserved remadas, and McQueen, some of those more neighborhood parks, which we'd like to encourage more reservations, and I think that's what this, those are the parks that this ordinance is really going to support.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, good questions.
Councilmember Tilke?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm curious, when you walk into the park and you go up to the remada, how do you know there's a reservation that's going to be there in the next hour or so?
Right, right now, we have signs in every reservable space that has a QR code, and it says, you know, it has language, it's like, check the reservation. So you scan that QR code with your phone, and it takes you to our website, where every night, morning, at midnight, it is updated with the daily reservations. So you would be able to select the park and then see what reservations are taking place in that park. We're trying to really do a lot of social media outreach and showcasing that that's available, because you can just look at it from the website before you go to the park. You don't have to do it, that website, that webpage is available before you enter the park or even plan your visit.
I appreciate that, the more outreach we can do to residents, so it makes it easier. Nothing worse than taking a whole car full of kids and thinking you have a remada for whatever reason, and you don't. But, so the enforcement is done by the rangers, and how do people get ahold of the rangers if there's an issue?
We have a phone number that's posted on that QR code sign, as well as our rule sign that has the park ranger phone number, and whichever park ranger is on duty, they change it to call them directly. So there's always one ranger that has it from about five in the morning until midnight.
Okay, great, thanks. I appreciate that. Obviously, I have not reserved a remada for my grandkids, so maybe I've let them down, but thank you.
No, it's up to their parents now, that's not your job anymore.
That's right.
I've been down at Gilbert Regional Park for a party that was in a reserved remada and had people already there, and had the mom have to say, excuse me, we have a reservation for this remada, but people were great about it, you know, and I know it's very busy down at Regional Park, so. Any other questions for Lane at this time? Seeing none, thanks, Lane.
Thank you very much.
Chief's up next.
Hi, Mayor and Council, Mike Engstead, I'm one of the assistant chiefs over at PD, and I've been nominated, kind of like Lane, to come talk about some proposed code amendments, specifically Chapter 54, Article 2. It talks about language that's going to be added to limit the use of a bus shelter or transportation facility to one hour, and this also will provide a definition of a transportation facility. Our current practice when it comes to especially bus stops, or sort of what we're talking about here, no restriction on time, stay at a bus stop location, so our officers will drive by and see folks sitting at bus stops, and it's not against the law currently to be there all day or a week or a month, if you wanted to. Bus shelters are maintained and operated by the town of Gilbert. Number three here, the longest headway route is 108 on Saturdays and Sundays, and what that means is there's a bus route that goes from Elliott and 48th Street over in Owatuki, comes all the way across East Valley and runs through Gilbert along Guadalupe Road. The longest wait that somebody would have is one hour between buses. It's a half an hour during the week, but the longest on Saturdays and Sundays. Currently, the city of Mesa has implemented the same language that's being proposed. And the proposed language is thus, number three, it's unlawful for any person to remain at a bus shelter or transportation facility for more than one hour. And this proposed language defines a transportation facility as used in this article means a location from which a public bus, trolley, shuttle, Valley Metro, or other public transit vehicle is used to transport passengers. So the implementation plan would be to post stickers and signage that says no trespassing and informs people that there's a one-hour limit. The signs will The signs will reference the Gilbert Code. And the plan is to start with education and verbal warnings. We have officers when they notice that folks are at a bus stop for a long time, particularly in the summer, if they have children. It's more of a welfare check, you know, do we know where we're going and can we help you in some way? But this would be, hey, just so you know, there is a one-hour limit at this particular bus shelter. And then provide information on services available. I would say by having a statute that defines a period of time, it gives the officer a little bit more teeth when they go and they do contact somebody and they say, hey, you know, I've noticed that you're kind of setting up camp here. You have a tarp over the shelter and you're, you know, and a cooler, like, let's have a conversation, try to get you some services in, in your name and let's try to work together. If criminal activity, drugs, liquor violations occur, the officer can issue a citation. That's currently, we can. But again, this gives us an avenue to go up and make contact based solely on the amount of time that somebody's been at that location. Any questions on this proposed language?
Thanks, Chief. Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, is this a problem?
Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, it's been a problem in Mesa. We haven't experienced it here yet. I think our officers are pretty expeditious about having conversations and trying to get people where they need to go. Our fear is that without having anything on the books, we, we don't want to be reactive in the future, so we're trying to get ahead of it.
Okay, because last time we spoke about data, like, nine people a day ride the buses. Okay. Just checking. Just checking.
And I, I don't think this is limited to just people that are waiting to use the bus. I think it's just people using the bus shelters. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Tulkey?
Thanks, Mayor. Because we just talked about remadas, I was trying to look at the language, the way it's written for the remadas, it appears that the same kind of activity could happen up to three hours. And at that point, I'm assuming if the ranger came in and needed police assistance, they would call at that time? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that's pretty common that we get called to the parks to help back up those rules.
Okay. I was just thinking, if we were going to do bus stops, let's not forget about the remadas if that's an issue as well. But it appears that it's already covered. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Torgason?
Yeah, I'm just curious, and this, Chris, would be for you. The, on the remada language, some of it lends itself to be a little vague, a little broad, let's say. Is there a way to hone that down so there's no misapplication of that?
Mayor, Councilmember Torgason, could you point to the language that you think, just want to make sure I'm on the same page as you? Are you looking at the definition of the actual prohibition? Is there a way to bring the language back up on the slide, kind of go backwards?
Unauthorized use of town-owned improvements. No person shall damage or wastefully or improperly use any town-owned improvements in a town park or recreation facility, including occupying a remada or picnic area for more than three hours unless authorized by a reservation permit in accordance with the section.
Let's back on that.
But wastefully or improperly used is a little subjective? I mean, aren't we just trying to say you can't, waste, improperly using, I mean, I don't know what that would mean, but I would think that if it's, you can't use it for more than three hours with a reservation, without a reservation, it's clear. When you start getting into wastefully or improperly, I mean, is it a, you know, you're having a little rally for some politician that you don't like? Is that wasteful? I mean, under this, it could be considered that. That's why I'm asking if we can kind of just clean up the language a little bit.
Councilmember Torgason, I mean, that's a good point. I think some of the language is vague so that there's left for some interpretation, but we've, we've mimicked other cities and I think in this, we took tempies language and like kind of molded it to what fits rest, but I think that's a good point if you want us to add some more.
I'd like to hone it down because I really don't want to become tempie. I like the fact that we could be a little bit clearer.
That's fair.
You know, in fact, I really liked not to be Mesa either, but it seems like that one's pretty clear. I just want to get it down there because it's just, when somebody can, we can leave it up to too much interpretation. It can be abused, misused, misapplied. If we have it nice and clear, and we're really worried about people just taking too much time. Isn't that it?
Essentially, yes. That's what we're looking at, is someone who's monopolizing the use of the space for longer periods of time, for all day, multiple days in a row. Yeah.
I think someone taking too much time and also encouraging more users for the space. If you limit one person's time, then more people get to use it.
Yeah, I think there's an intent there that's very positive. I'm just looking at the language.
Okay.
And I agree that sometimes it gets a little vague and it's hard to interpret those things. Vice Mayor?
This question, and thank you for your presentation. This question actually may be from Melanie. When we do our homeless census, do these bus shelters or our remadas ever come into play when we're doing the census?
The pick count, you're referring to the pick count?
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson. Yes, actually, when we do the pick count and we do go and do our conversations with those who are unsheltered, we do check all of the parks and we are visiting all of the bus stops. We actually get that information from PD or from the park rangers. The park rangers actually help us with some of those conversations, so we do utilize all of the prior data that we've received in order to make sure we are trying to check those locations to interview those who may be in need of services as well.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, if I may go back to Councilmember Torgason's question, if we can get some direction, we've got the proposed language up there. If, if it were to say, we'll go to, no person shall damage, would you want to remove wastefully and improperly used and just leave damage in there?
If damage is already covered by something else. I would assume damage is already covered by something else, but if it's not, of course have damage in there. I would assume some sort of vandalism of public property exists, but to make it as concise as possible, wastefully improperly used, I mean, when they have a, like, we're going to have a Jim Torgason statue building day, the mayor may think that's irresponsible and wasteful. Myself, I think it's fantastic. So, you know, it leaves it to interpretation. So let's try and hone it down so that we have a nice, nice and clean and nobody arguing over an adjective. Is that?
Yep. No, that's clear. We can do that. We can remove wastefully improperly used and we'll look at the damages. And we'll come back with the language on the council meeting, a lot more concise, the point with the three-hour prohibition.
Thank you.
One follow-up on the parks, aren't our parks already marked as no overnight stays? Am I?
Yeah, the parks close at 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah, because I was thinking, they do the pick count about four or five o'clock in the morning, correct, Melanie? So technically, we shouldn't have anybody in the parks at that point in time. And as far as the, the ordinance, the, the changes in the sections that you were talking about, Chief, I appreciate that we're mimicking Mesa since we share so many borders and space with them and bus stops and, you know, baseline road gets confusing to people and who, who belongs to what. And so thank you for that. I appreciate it. And I agree, we don't want to be Mesa. I love my Mason friends, but that's a good. Thank you all. Thank you very much for your, oh, Councilmember Tulkey, did you have?
Mayor, I just wanted to mention that one of the prohibited activities is urban camping. So I think that probably covers if somebody's staying overnight.
And the parks are closed.
Right.
Accepted the riparian because camping is allowed there.
But feral cats are still allowed to sleep there, right?
Feral cats are not allowed there. Well, they're there, but they're, I'm not going to say anything.
I'm a dollar.
I love cats. I will say, I love cats. Okay, that's all we have on our agenda for the study session this evening. We will go ahead and adjourn this meeting and be back at 6:00 for student of the month.